What do we do wrong? All right, great. Okay. Good evening and thank you and welcome to the regular meeting of the Brisbane Planning Commission Thursday, October ninth, two thousand and fourteen, seven thirty P. M., Brisbane City Hall. Call to order.
Commissioner Cunningham?
Present.
Commissioner Parker?
Here.
Commissioner Reinhardt?
Here.
The records show Commissioner Doe just walked in the door and Commissioner Munir is absent.
All right, adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Consent calendar, approval of the draft action minutes of the August twenty-eighth, two thousand and fourteen, regular meeting and number two, the September eleventh, two thousand and fourteen, regular meeting. Let's start with August twenty-eighth. Any comments?
No.
No comments.
All right, September eleventh, regular meeting, any comments?
No.
No.
Okay, moving on.
Can I move to approve both regular meetings for August twenty-eighth and September eleventh?
And I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item E, oral communications. This is the limit of total fifteen minutes for any items that are not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody who would like to speak in oral communications in our audience? We do have a few people here.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'll repeat that. Oral communications is, it's a limit of fifteen minutes, but it's for anybody who would like to speak on a topic that is actually not on the agenda for this evening. And if there's something that you would like to speak about that's not on our agenda this evening, you're welcome to speak at this time. Is there anybody in our audience who would like to speak on a topic that's not on our agenda? No? Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. Then I would close our oral communications. Written communications. The only thing that I have before me this evening is the October two thousand and fourteen monthly magazine from the League of California Cities, Western City Magazine. I have nothing else before me. Any of the other commissioners have any written communications?
No.
Nope.
Okay, okay. So we will move on to item G, new business, which is a public hearing for one thousand Marina Boulevard sign review, SR dash seven dash one four, and variance V dash two dash one four. Sign review and variance to allow two lighted building mounted signs for U technology, and that is Y O U capital, Y capital O capital U, technology that would exceed the maximum permitted vertical dimension of five feet by approximately two feet in two lines of text. Terry Long at Art Incorporated fund V one 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 or V eight, V eight, V one one one, how we pronounce that, one thousand Marina LLC on a APN zero zero seven dash one six five dash zero dash zero one zero.
Yes, thank you. At Art Company requests approval of two new lighted wall signs for U technology on the building at one thousand Marina Boulevard. One of these would replace the existing New Star sign on the southwest side of the building. The other would be on the northwest side of the building, so the sign would be-
Ken, can you speak up?
Up my mic.
Sorry.
Okay. Try that, is that better?
That's better, thank you.
So the signs would be visible to US one oh one traffic headed northbound or southbound. We'll note for the record Commissioner Munir arrived. The signs would display the company logo and would be comprised of two lines of text with U on the first line and technology on the second line and a U symbol at the top corner. At approximately seven feet in height, the signs would be over the five-foot height limit that's allowed for this zone of Sierra Point. Building signs at Sierra Point are regulated under a sign program. The sign program includes three zones with the largest signs up to eight feet in height, being those farthest from the one oh one freeway, and the smallest being Zone One, which this site is located in Zone One. The sign program allows signs in Zone One to be at five-foot maximum in the vertical dimension or height and a thirty-five-foot maximum width for a total sign area of up to one hundred and seventy-six square feet. While the U technology sign would be over the five-foot height limit by two feet, at one hundred and twenty square feet, it would be only about sixty-eight percent of the allowable sign area, since the width is only proposed at fourteen feet. The U portion of the sign would have a blue lighted face of five feet in height and the technology portion would be in white at approximately one foot eight inches in height as shown on the image on the screen. The applicant has indicated that the request is to exceed the maximum permitted dimension, vertical dimension, is to help assure that the sign will be clearly visible from the northbound or southbound traffic on Highway one oh one. The sign program also calls for a single lines of text, however, imposing this requirement is not consistent with the company's trademark logo and the city is prohibited by law from modifying a registered trademark. The Brisbane Municipal Code contains findings required for the granting of variances and for the granting of sign permits. As detailed in the agenda report, the signs would meet all of the required findings. The Planning Commission has also previously granted three similar variances in recent years to the maximum vertical dimension. These include Alliance Bank Corp.'s logo sign for approximately the same size at the same building, and that has since been removed. The Hitachi sign on the same building, which would remain. Wiley Technology at eight thousand Marina Boulevard was approved to have two eleven-foot tall signs in height, and that's in Zone Two, or normally they would have six feet in height. Like this application, both the Alliance Bank Corp. and the Wiley Technology approvals were to allow two lines of text. In brief, the granting of the variance in sign permit would allow for the company's two-line logo and would fit well with the building in terms of its scale, colors, and would allow it to be legible from US one oh one. The lighting would be similar to the existing signs on the building and would not create a glare or distraction. And the applicant has offered to have a dimmer switch on those lights and to have them adjustable that way, should that be a concern of the Planning Commission. In closing, staff recommends conditional approval of sign review, SR seven fourteen, and variance V two fourteen, the adoption of the resolution provided in the staff report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamel, why don't we start with you?
I really don't have any comments. I think the, it looks pretty good to me. More.
Yeah, same here, it looks good to me. I was curious, so if we did have the dimmer switch in there, what, like, what would be the procedure for actually using it? I mean, is someone gonna call from, you know, who fields the calls and, I mean, is it really practical to have the dimmer switch? If there is one, I just wanted to know if there was some kind of procedure in using it. Otherwise, anyone could call up and-
Right, right. I don't like it, turn it down.
Good question. There is a provision, a condition that it's, it does not create glare, so if we were to, either staff noticed it, it was a concern and raised it to the owners, or if we got a complaint about that, hey, this light, this sign is more highly lit than we had anticipated, they have then the controlled ability to adjust that. And I think the applicant may be able to address this further. The U part of the sign in blue tends to recede compared to the white part, and so I think that also provides them for an opportunity to kind of equalize the intensity of the two colors, so it's an advantage to them as well, but I think he can address that better.
Sure.
If I'm mistaking how he's relayed that to me, he can clarify that.
Are any of the other signs, you know, the zones that you mentioned earlier, the exceptions, do they have higher illumination or is it?
The illumination is similar.
It's similar, right, okay, that's good. No, that's all the questions I have, and it'd be nice to have a red, white, and blue up there, so that works.
Yeah. I think in the past, when we look at the signs, basically, the main concern was the obstruction to the motorist.
Mm-hmm, right.
And I think they are a distraction, and in this particular case, I think it's very well addressed and provision for the dimmer switch, that's really a plus.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Do you have any questions?
I have no questions. So relative to the signs that are currently out there, how does this illumination weigh in? I mean, what does that look like relative to that?
Well, the, the, the size of the sign is, is similar and the illumination is similar, so I think you're going to see really a very similar type of illumination compared to, say, Hitachi. Hitachi is in red, which strikes me as, so I think there's two things, there's color illumination and I think sometimes it may be hard to compare, you've got a little bit of apples and oranges, if you will, with the different colors, so.
Yep.
But I, this essentially would be a similar type of viewing experience.
Do we, do we have any other signs out at Sierra Point that are of similar color? I'm just trying to cover all bases here.
I don't recall the, recall the colors of the other signs. You have, obviously, Hitachi is in red. I think New Star, which is-
White.
The existing location of one of the proposed signs was white, I believe.
And has anybody complained about the New Star sign?
Never.
In white, because that's the brightest illumination, if I'm not?
Yes. Right, and it is larger letters, all in white, so I would anticipate New Star might actually appear somewhat brighter because of the color.
And that's six letters of same size with a brighter illumination, and this is three letters of a less illumination, given that the light is blue, correct?
Right, right.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to ask those questions. Okay, then, are there any other questions for staff relative to this?
No.
No, no.
Would anybody like to approve this project?
Open the public hearing.
Oh, I have to open the public hearing, I'm sorry. All right. All right. So open the public hearing, thank you.
Good evening. My name's Terry Long with At Art, and I've been in the business a long time, and as I've been to many Planning Commission meetings, but our office is one-off ramp up by Candlestick Park, so this is the closest I've ever been to one of these meetings. U Technology, there's their logo that was put together, I thought I'd bring that. And lighting signs, blue is not a good color if you want bright, so basically, the blue will be a dimmer, duller color, and what we're doing with technology is dimming that because we don't want the white in technology to overpower the blue. So there's a whole system to that, and because there was some concern about the lumens and so forth, we added the dimmer just as a adjustment, so that if anybody had any, any concern. Actually, the U Technology replaces the Alliance sign, which is covered, and the other one is the New Star sign, so the New Star sign will come down, and you're right, those are all white letters, much brighter than U Technology.
Good.
Are there any other questions that I could answer?
No, that's clear.
I think that's why I kind of messed up, is because we didn't have any questions.
Yeah, it's pretty clear.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming down.
Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to make comment regarding this project?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
What is your pleasure, planning commission?
Works for me.
I'll make a motion to approve the one thousand Marina Boulevard sign review, SR seven fourteen, and variance V dash two dash fourteen.
Second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome to Brisbane.
Thank you, welcome to Brisbane.
Karen, you too.
I am going to do that. Thanks, can I have that? Since I don't have any internet connection again. Thanks very much. Anyone may appeal the action of the Planning Commission to the City Council no later than fifteen calendar days or ten calendar days for subdivision and sign applications after the Commission's action. An application form and fee is required to make a formal appeal. For additional information, please contact the Community Development Department at four one five, five oh eight, two one two zero, specifically John Swecky. All right. Moving on, items initiated by staff.
You received in your packet with the mail-out memorandum from the former city attorney to the mayor and council, and it really just outlines some procedural issues with the Baylands EIR and the planning process, and we've been very oriented and focused on the final EIR. You know, the EIR is just really a document that helps support a decision-making process, so the council had asked us some time ago and the city attorney to start elaborating a little bit about what happens, you know, when you get past the publication of the final EIR, and that's really what this memo is, is kind of intended to outline at a very sort of high scale, you know, sort of a thirty-thousand-foot overview. It doesn't pretend to answer all the kind of questions that the Commission will have or the council will have, or every, every, you know, possible nuance of how this could go, but it really was intended to provide sort of a summary or an outline for everyone to kind of, a bit of a roadmap, I guess, for everybody and understand what the expectation is and what the path forward is. So I can either walk you through it, or if you have questions on it, I think really up to the Commission's choice, I provided it for information, there's no action required of you, it's just provided informationally, but whatever form's easiest for you to get through it, I'll be glad to help you with it.
I would prefer that you walk us through it, John.
Okay. I think there are a couple sort of categories with it. I think the introduction, as I mentioned, was just to identify procedural options, you know, and what that might lead to, I think, is the next important sort of step of it. And page two, they talk about potential planning outcomes that would result from this procedure. So, you know, again, basic categories, the first would be no change in anything, you know, the applicant's proposal, proposed specific plan is denied, the city retains the general plan language as it is today, so that would be kind of one potential outcome. The other, another potential outcome would be for the city to, to update its general plan policies for the Baylands, to provide a little more guidance and direction in terms of the kind of development that can be approved in the future, because frankly, the general plans doesn't provide a really high level of guidance in that regard right now. And that would not necessarily require approval of a specific plan, it would just be the city to adopt additional general plan policy guidance that would, that would control future development of a specific plan at a later time. And the third outcome would be for the, you know, the general plan policies be updated to some extent to accommodate a specific plan, whether it be the developer's proposal or some other iteration of a plan that, that is under consideration today, one of the variants or one of the alternatives that's studied in the EIR, so. So again, those are fundamentally the three outcomes of the process, which is fairly simple, but again, that can take a lot of paths to get to those three particular places. And I think the other thing to consider or for everyone to be aware of is that what is driving, from a procedural standpoint, this process is the fact that UPC has a development proposal on the table, and one way or the other, the city has an obligation to act on that. It's not something that can be tabled indefinitely. For example, if there's a city initiated and the city just wanted to terminate it, you know, we could do that, but it is an applicant-initiated project, so legally, they have a right to get a final answer from the city on this, whether it be approval, denial, or whatever. And that need, our legal obligation to act on that application is really what's going to be the, the, either the final decision or a springboard for some other potential planning process the city wants to do independent of the developer's proposal, but, so again, that's always what's going to be on your plate as a commission is to, you know, ultimately, the council will need a recommendation from you as to what action needs to be taken with the developer's proposal. And again, even in there, there gets, there's a lot of nuance in terms of what you may choose to recommend to the, to the council at some point, you know, whether, again, whether it's denial of an application, or whether it's major modification of the application or minor modification, so those are all, you know, options that the commission will have to sort of sort through and decide on, you know, as you're, as you're going through your, your public hearing process. Also, you know, as I mentioned, there are the scenarios, the other scenarios and alternatives that are studied in the EIR, those could become the basis for a, a final plan to be approved or a set of general plan policies. Again, I also wanted to make you aware of there, some other ongoing activities, not just the EIR preparation that's ongoing, but the city is in the process of preparing some fiscal and economic studies regarding the, you know, both the long-term implications to the city of a development on that site, and also a more nuanced kind of economic study of, of how you potentially fund, how this project might actually get capitalized and built over time, given some of the upfront costs of infrastructure and remediation, so. So that's, again, part of some economic work that the city's undertaking.
But should that be the responsibility of the applicant?
They're providing, they'll provide a lot of the base data, but I think the, the city wants to have sort of an independent review of the applicant's, you know, contention. I wouldn't be surprised if it's somewhere along the line, you hear from the developer that a certain land use mix and intensity is required for the, you know, to make the project economically feasible or to pencil, and the city wants to have some independent review of kind of some of their underlying assumptions and some of the data that would, you know, go into that conclusion or the city's evaluation of that conclusion, as opposed to having to rely solely on the developer's, you know, perspective on that, so. It is trying to give a little bit of a fresh or a outside perspective on some of these kind of issues. And then, as mentioned, the final EIR, which is under preparation. The council's also committed to performing a community opinion survey regarding the Baylands and attitudes about, you know, various, since the survey hasn't really been formulated, I don't, I really don't know what the specifics will be included, but I think it's just to get a feel for some of the, you know, the land uses that the community, you know, the reaction to certain land uses that have been approved, are proposed on the site, maybe other kind of aspirational issues, what the community would like to see incorporated into the development, and again, that would be occurring, I'll get into the sequencing of all that in a minute. And then there's a sustainability plan, as one of your commissioners is on the Sustainability Subcommittee, you know, that's an ongoing work program as well, and, you know, the survey may try to gauge this, some, some community input or assessment of some of the, the sustainability goals and programs that are planned. So all three of, well, the sequence will be the final EIR, the economic work, and the sustainability plan will help inform the community survey, so those three work products, and the goal is to have them available and made available and, you know, through community outreach before the community survey takes place. So there's a baseline of information, the city makes an effort to make sure it's, you know, really kind of pushed out there in terms of the availability and to help people kind of get up to speed, and then follow up with the survey. And then, the goal is that you wouldn't start your hearings until the results of the community survey are available. So at your disposal, when you start your hearings, ideally, you'll have all the base technical data, you know, the EIR and these technical studies, economic studies, et cetera, along with the results of the survey before you undertake your, your public hearing process. So that, that's the goal as it stands right now.
Okay, I have some questions. So we will hold the public hearing for the, for the EIR, the final EIR, after the fiscal and economic study?
Yes.
Oh. When do we think this might happen?
You ask the hard questions, don't you?
Of course I do.
I think we're looking at, if you got started before early summer of next year, I would be quite surprised at times.
Now, why do you say that? Harder question.
No, that's easy, because of the lead time of certain activities. The final EIR, you know, around the end of the year, it'll be published. The survey may take the council some time to work through the process of actually developing a survey, and, and that takes some time to actually undertake and then, you know, disseminate the results, so, you know, that's probably two to three months just of survey time, and probably longer in terms of the front end of actually getting the survey.
Okay, so for the naysayers, can we put together, not, not a timeline that can be adhered to, but a proposed timeline because of these factors? Because people already are grumbling about, you know, you know, X, Y, Z are reasons for things being held back or held forward or whatever. Can, can we put together something that says, you know, here's why this happens, here's why that happens?
Yeah, I think there's a way to certainly lay out a sequence of events. It's really hard to put dates on some of these things that are-
You don't have to put dates, but-
But in terms of a sequencing, yeah, we could certainly do something.
Because people say, you know, we're, we're holding things back, or you're holding things back, or they're holding things back, or somebody else is holding things back or forward, or whatever. The, the reality is that things take time for whatever reason. Could you put that in legal terms for me? Please, go ahead.
Legal terms?
Yeah, well, no, yes, put it, put it in legal terms.
I don't know how we would necessarily put that in legal terms, because there's a context to be had, I think, before you can formulate those words, but something along the lines, I think what Karen's trying to say is, something along the lines of a projected target dates that we could actually look forward to, that they, you know, with the caveat that, you know, this is subject to change as, as per whatever the situation or context requires, something along those lines, but I don't know how you-
That's pretty much every date I've ever- -to do with this project in the last four years.
No, but I think what you were saying is very helpful, so you were saying sequentially, it's the FEIR, then the fiscal report, and then the sustainability report, then the survey, and then, so you can say, I guess, something along the lines of FEIR projected date, end of the year, fiscal report possibly four to five months out, something like that, and then sustainability and survey, two or three months to even craft, and then to collect the data as another two or three months, and then perhaps to compile and to-
Yeah, certainly, some parts are easier, like the survey, other than the front end. The front end, which is in the city's control, is probably the most, you know, that's the time- The front end, which is in the city's control, is probably the most, you know, that's the time element. That's probably the least clear because, you know, the survey company, they have a certain protocol once they actually can do the survey, how long it takes them to get an adequate, you know, response rate and the follow-up they need to do to make sure the response rate and how long it takes them to crunch the results and when they can turn around to final product. But, yeah, the sequencing is easy. And again, I could put some projected dates. The problem is when the dates go out there and they get, you know, they slip, then I don't know if that's more positive or more harmful or helpful to have dates that aren't met versus. But, you know, I think the sequencing in terms of trying to lay out what the activity, and there's quite a lot of under, you know, I guess, activity that in the public realm isn't really obvious in terms of these ongoing work programs and efforts that are underway. And if that's helpful to kind of relay what's going on, that's certainly part of what we can do.
I think that's critical because, you know, even being out in the public as a public person, not as a planning commission person, you know, you hear these things that, you know, we're stalling or we're doing this or we're doing that or we're doing one thing or another. And to have the accurate information out there that, you know, process A is prerequisite on process B. So, it doesn't, it's not that, you know, the city or the planning commission or the city council or any other body is holding anything up for any reason. This is how the process works. And we've had this conversation before. I just think if we can lay it out even clearer, the better. Because there's misconceptions about how the process works, you know, people are holding things up or whatever. You hear it, we hear it. Jamil, I know you've heard it, just one or two times. Any comments on that? Any comments on that to help, to help the information process, please?
No, actually, I'm more interested in a fairly good amount of time for us to be able to read the document. So, I was wondering how much, when would we receive the document and when, you know, how much time would we have to thoroughly go over it?
Over the final EIR?
Yeah.
I would say by the time the survey and all that happens, you'd probably have had-
Six months.
Minimum of four, four to six months.
Four to six months.
Legal term you were talking about is like the attorneys get together and they submit their summary and all that.
Right.
And I think similarly, it can be done here too, along the same line, that all the parties get together and submit their projected dates as to what will be done when. And I don't think the city is geared for that kind of a process. But in general, whenever there is a case before the judge, the judge asks all the parties to submit their briefs and summary. So, I don't know whether we can start that kind of process here or not. But looking at the schedule here, I don't think we will be able to do it until almost next August or September. Because the way the process is going, I don't, I don't think it can be expedited any further. And also, the question I have regarding the, you know, the housing on that particular site, we have to decide at some point how that will be handled because we had the vote on that, that there shouldn't be no more housing. Now, the council is already looking at the economic analysis and one of the factor will be that. So, are we going to tackle that before any of this process starts? Or are we going to wait until we say yes or no to the EIR? Because that would be a fundamental-
Yeah, I'm with you.
Decision that has to be made upfront before we can even really make up our mind.
I might look at it a little differently is that housing is fundamental to what the applicant has proposed to the city. So, from a due process standpoint, you need to consider the applicant's application in its entirety. So, it wouldn't make any, there's really no vehicle by which you would take the idea of housing and strip it out of the applicant's proposal and try to deal with it separately. And what's going to happen is you're going to consider the final EIR, you'll consider the applicant's proposal and make a recommendation to the council. And if your recommendation is it's all fine except the housing, then that's your recommendation. If your recommendation is deny it, that's your recommendation. It's going to be in the recommendation, the recommendation on the housing is part and parcel to what you'll be recommending to the council do with the applicant's proposal. You can't just take that issue and deal with it and sort of set the rest of their application aside.
Yeah, but the thing is, in terms of the delay, that's going to be further delayed. In case, for example, we go for the housing, are we going to go again with a new kind of measure on the ballot that yes, housing will be allowed because it's already been approved? Somehow we have to overturn that, right?
What the council's already committed to is put whatever is going to get recommended for approval on this project to the ballot at the end, right? So you're doing some opinion surveying upfront, but at the end of the day, the council has pretty much committed that they're going to put a project, if there's something they're entertaining approval of, on the ballot at the end. So that wouldn't be something that interferes or, that would be after your process is completed.
But the thing is, the problem with the ballot is it really doesn't really justify what we went through. It may run on people's emotions, that I don't want this project or anything like that, you know. So, that's a danger too. And that's why I was saying that we may have, it might, would have been better to resolve this issue upfront because we've been going through all these efforts to look at the merits of the project, you know. And now we're going to go back and say, okay, we're going to have a ballot. Now, average citizen, really, they don't make an effort to review everything. So they will be run by their emotions, you know, that I don't want housing, period. Even though there might be a very good reason for that, but they might say, I don't want housing. So all this effort will be, and the project is relying on that particular element.
Or they may say, I want housing.
Oh, they may say, but I think the-
Well, I mean-
Well, hang on a second, you guys. Our current general plan says we don't allow housing on the baylands. We are not here to make decisions about new laws. Wait, what, wait, let me finish. So, our current general plan says no housing on the baylands. So, if there is a discussion or a new law to be put on the books about housing on the baylands, how does this affect our discussion? Because we can't be telling our city council to change the law. That's their, that's their purview, not ours. We can't even be discussing housing because it's not a law that is allowed at this point.
Well, let's make sure we're all real clear. Part of what the applicant's requesting is an amendment to the general plan to delete that language.
That's not our purview. We don't change the laws.
No, that's exactly your purview. You make recommendations to the city council to amend the general plan. That's part of what a planning commission does. You may recommend not to change the general plan or you may recommend the general plan be changed. That is absolutely what your obligation and your purview is in this case. The applicant's made the proposal. You have an obligation to respond to that proposal and make a recommendation to the council, one way or the other.
So, we can say to the, we can say that we think as a body that the, that the city council should change that or should put that to the vote? What do we, how do we put that?
Well, they're going to put it to a vote, one way or the other. I don't, what they've committed to, to date, is to put any project, whether it has housing or whether it doesn't have housing, any project that they're going to consider, they're going to put on the ballot. So, I wouldn't really worry about, you're making a recommendation to the council and they will choose to format that into the ballot at some point. And that's something they and the city attorney will, will work at sort of the structure of that. But right now, before you, when this gets to you, is an pending request by the project sponsor to amend the general plan.
So, council will not come up with their own recommendation? They will basically hear everything and then hand it over to the citizens to decide? Is that-
Well, I don't know. I mean, the council has to decide what they're going to put on the ballot. So to say that they're not going to decide, they don't have to put the applicant's proposal on the ballot. That's, they haven't committed to doing that. They're more likely to put something on the ballot that they are supportive of. If it involves substantial alterations to the developer's plan or is based on some other alternative in the EIR, that may be what they choose to put on the ballot. It's not a pass-through. This isn't, you know, they haven't, they're not putting the developer's proposal on the ballot. That's not the commitment. It's-
Are there any legal ramifications to that? Because now the developer is completely put out of loop because of-
Well, they'll, they'll act on, it's part of this is all acting on the project. So yes, the applicant will get a final, final action on their development proposal, whether it's deny it, approve it with minor changes, approve it with major changes, approve it as-is. And those are essentially options that the council can ultimately-
But that's after the citizens' vote.
Yeah, the sequencing at the back end is really for the council to decide. I believe they would put something on the ballot. There's a little paragraph in this paper about that end of it as opposed to a referendum where they take an action and then put it up. So I think they would, I think they would take the ballot, to the ballot before they took an action. But, again, that's probably, that's not really my area of particular nuance and expertise. But that's going to be at the back end, after you've had your, your kind of say on this, then the council will make that decision.
Would that be something that we could have the city attorney talk to us about at that point?
You can, but it's, I mean, it's informational, but-
Just to understand how that factors into our decisions.
Well, it shouldn't, it doesn't factor into your decision. You're making a recommendation to the city council, one way or the other.
And it's, and then that part of it is decided solely by the city council?
Correct.
Okay, and so before that even, just for educational purposes, just to project as a, be an informed citizen? Would that be something we could talk to them about?
Sure.
Carolyn?
I don't have any questions about that. I am a little interested in how we're going to be able to get through this in four meetings, but, or- Seems to be-
I'm sorry.
But I'm a little ahead here.
They think highly of your decision-making process as a compliment.
And this is going to be a public meeting and there's going to be-
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect that, to keep within the compressed timeframe they're talking about, that you would be meeting a little more often than your normal meeting schedule. So, that would be something you'd have to work through, obviously, and schedule. But, you know, I think you'd be looking at something on the order of weekly meetings for some period of time to get through this.
I mean, certainly, it's going to be a public comment. We have thoroughly read the document and we thoroughly need to discuss it. So, and take into consideration the strengths or weaknesses of each of the plans. It just seems like it's going to take a while. And to do an adequate job, you know, and of course, we're here to do an adequate job, I think, you know, that's our obligation. So, we need the time to be able to do that.
Well, anything else?
Nothing else.
Throw up in my mouth?
Go ahead.
I'm actually not comfortable at all with this process. I think we're, we are being put in a position that's untenable. And I think before any further meetings regarding this go forward, personally, I would like to sit down with the city council and talk about it because I don't like this at all. I'm not feeling comfortable. I'm not, I'm not feeling comfortable. That's my personal perspective on this. I, I, I don't feel that the, I don't know. I'm just not, I'm not good with what we can come up with relative to making recommendations to the city council. I'm not speaking as the chair of the planning commission. I'm just speaking as a member of the planning commission that I'm not comfortable with how this is. I think we could be set up for failure here and I'm not okay with it, so.
I don't understand how we're set up for failure. I think that we have certain guidelines and it's our responsibility to, to understand the guidelines and to adequately address the guidelines and then make a recommendation. I think we're going to have enough time to read through the material and see what the comments are for that, the people who have read the documents and look at the answers. And then we need to look through the document and see the strengths and weaknesses of the various plans and whether the document itself is going to adequately meet the environmental impacts to the project. And I think we can do it. I don't see that, I mean-
I was just saying, I feel uncomfortable. It doesn't mean that we should, we should feel uncomfortable, just me. So, thank you for-
I think you can do it.
Well, thank you.
We have this, we have-
I, I think I'm, I'm-
We're going to have plenty of support from the public, as a matter of fact.
I just want to say, I'm feeling uncomfortable about it and so.
Okay. Fair enough.
So-
We have one uncomfortable commissioner here.
I'm sure by the time it's all said and done, we'll all be a little uncomfortable.
I'm already changing my mind.
All right, so there's no action we need to make on this. This is just discussion, correct? All right. Commissioner Cunningham is uncomfortable. Everybody else is okay.
Make sure it shows up in the minutes.
Well, you know, the flow, I mean, for me, the flow chart's been a useful tool that we've had from the beginning and the orientations, which it's good to go. I haven't done it yet, but I was going to go back to the videos. You know, we have the videos from the earlier orientation, but of the process. So, I've been meaning to go back to that. And I'm happy to see that the, you know, same consultant we're using for the sustainability committee is doing the fiscal and economic studies. So that's, so there's, you know, there's other background information that makes me feel a little more comfortable because I'm working on different parts of it, you know, or looking at it from a different angle. But, but the flow chart and, and the digital document isn't clear, but I was going to get another, get a printout of this, the planning review process. I think that's useful to have up on my, I have the flow chart on my wall at home that we got just about the EIR process that was handed out. And that's been good for orientation, just to refresh while we're waiting for all the comments. So, we can do it together.
Thank you.
One clarification I want is after we submit the, our proposal, our recommendation to the council, are the council going to have a series of hearings also? That was the past practice and I don't know in this case also or not. The reason I'm saying that is because the science I see is the council don't want to make any decisions. They want to leave it up to the voters. And if that's the- Pardon me?
They want to leave it up to who?
Up to the voters, you know, they're going to go before the-
Okay.
But what I'm saying is the council should be doing their job and their job is to hold the public hearings and get the comments from that and come up with a decision that this is what council's position is. However, we want to put this on the ballot. It should be clear that what council wants, not just that this is the plan and we're just going to hand it over to the voters. Because we are spending all hours and I think I can see the Karen's concern here that in this particular case, planning commission is sticking their head and saying, this is what we're saying, but the council is not saying anything. what we're saying, but the council is not saying anything. So council has the final say, and they should be the one ultimately responsible for coming up with a certain recommendation, and that recommendation should then go forward to the public votes, voting. Am I clear? That was part of your concern, right?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I... Yeah.
And so that process has to be clearly defined here, and it's not in the chart, because we're going to have this series of hearings, but what about council? Are they going to have this series of... And when that going to end? When they're going to come up with their final position on that? And it doesn't have to be binding. It can be go before the voters and say, okay, this is what we decide now.
It says right here in the flow chart that there's a city council public hearings in the middle.
Yeah, I know. The thing is, is public hearings, what the outcome of that will be.
Well, certainly, nobody knows what the outcome's going to be, but procedurally, yeah, they're going to... I mean, there's a fine, you know... There's a question, it's always a really legitimate question, if how much process do they duplicate of what you've done? And that's going to be their choice. They can... Because you're going to obviously have a lot of hearings and a lot of taking a lot of testimony. So there are two ways of looking at that. One is, well, they take all that, and then their process is somewhat streamlined, because they've already received the results of all the back and forth and the discussion and the planning commission discussion and public testimony and whatnot. And that helps streamline the process from, you know, the planning commission to the council. That's one approach. The other approach is they could look at it as a whole new, fresh set of hearings and basically duplicate the effort you go through. And I don't know, I, at this point, don't know what their goal is at this particular moment.
Yeah, I never liked that process, because if that's the case, then why we have planning commission? So I think they should take the recommendation that we have put a real effort to understand that and all that, and then if there is a need, then they can have an extensive hearings on that. But in the past, what was happening is the planning commission comes up with all this recommendation and all that, goes before the council, and council starts from...
From fresh.
From fresh, zero again. So it makes us feel that we are just, what are we doing here? So I hope that that message can go to the council, that this is an important project, and, you know, if we are committed to spend the time, then we like to see the council is paying, you know, some attention to what we are doing. You look puzzled, Carolyn.
No, I think it is a puzzle. I mean, this is not like, you know, we're talking about somebody's six-foot fence. We're talking about a 680-foot fence, 680 square acre fence. So it's, you know, it's a little...
The China wall.
Right?
Wall of China.
Yeah, so I will stand confused.
Well, you know, I just wanted to add one more thing. I think what you requested earlier about, you know, showing, this plays into the request earlier about showing the process and the timeline, you know, maybe it's more of a visual thing, or it needs to be up further, you know, in the website itself. I mean, you go to the EIR process, you have, it's like five or six steps down, you know, and it's more of a summary of like what's been versus what's coming, with or without dates, I think, John, to your point. We don't really need the dates as much as we need the document, the sequencing to show whether it's vertical or horizontal, doesn't matter, but I would like to see that, you know, in the... On the website, because I think a lot of the public, you know, would be helpful.
The flow chart, yeah.
Yeah, like the ones we're talking about, or in whatever form you think would be good. And also, you know, and again, it's a website thing, but it is far down there. Maybe we could get the EIR process link also on the important links, which is on, like, basically the top, almost the top level of the website. So I think that might help.
Yeah, and certainly, when there's more, we try to refresh it for what's new. If there's something that's really new, that gets bumped up. And so certainly, if we do get the sequencing, or when we get the sequencing thing worked out, that would be, you know, bumped up in the website.
Yeah, yeah, and then I think, you know, if I can speak for you, we were all comfortable, and you were comfortable earlier. I think when we had the, you know, the extension, we got a little disoriented, and we've been waiting longer. But before, we had the orientations, your things were really close up, the process, the steps were all laid out, and we're like, okay, okay, we're going through these. And then it's like, okay, we have an extension. Well, now it's... We're a little disoriented, you know, maybe. So it's a good time to refresh with the sequencing and the flow chart, so...
Okay.
All right.
Any further comments?
Well, I was wondering, listening to our planning commission, that maybe we should have a little refresher before we start tackling this.
Yeah, I think certainly, I need to do what I can do to make the commission comfortable with what the task is at hand, and so, yeah, whatever means or methods is most useful for you, I'm glad to entertain it, whether it's, you know, again, to walk through this in more detail, or is it back to the EIR? Because, I mean, I understand there's a lot of moving parts, and, you know, the idea that really, I think the difference probably is what we really spun out in here is a lot higher level of detail regarding, you know, before kind of the EIR was the focus, and the decision was sort of a, you know, the decision will happen then. And we've really broadened out to when people understand, when we talk about the decision, you know, what, getting our arms wrapped around what that decision is and needs to be. So I mean, that's probably part of it, too, is we really added another layer, and I think that's how this is going to inherently be. There's going to be more layers added to it, because it's just going to get increasingly sort of complex in a way. You know, there's just going to be more information to have to get your arms wrapped around. But I think you need to... What I need to make sure you understand is the process, because if you can't anchor yourself with the process, you're going to have a big problem collectively to get through this. So if I have a chairperson who's not comfortable with the process, obviously, we need to make sure that everyone is clear on the process. And, you know, there's an element of what's legally required here, and that's fundamentally what you do. You make recommendations to the city council. That's what you're doing here. So, I mean, some of these things are just built into state law of why you exist as a planning commission, so, you know, within that. So you need to maybe make sure you're clear on what your confines and what your legal obligation is when you serve on this commission, too, so...
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Then we should do that. Because if I'm not clear, and I'm really trying hard to be clear, and we have a largest project in San Mateo County and San Francisco County ever, that we're trying to make good decisions on, I think we need to be really clear on what we're doing.
Yeah, I would suggest maybe we can, and I'll work with scheduling with the city attorney, and possibly even talk to the council subcommittee who is very involved in this.
Perfect.
Maybe we just have an early workshop, where it's, you know, a workshop, or a working session to walk through, you know, this piece by piece. Because that's, you know, how other individuals and other bodies have gone through this. You're seeing an end product of probably... This is probably version 12 of this, that was probably produced over a nine-month period, so, you know, the fact that you weren't along for the ride, I don't know if that makes it better or worse. I think it makes it better, but maybe in your mind, it's not, so...
Right.
You know, you've seen the end result, but you weren't at the table while this was kind of ground through, and the steps were developed, so...
Well, this is not a small project, so...
No, absolutely not.
But it's a very important project.
All right, so... So we need to make notes on that, or the notes being met, how do we notate that one?
No, we'll just schedule that one, you know?
All right.
When we can.
Anything else from staff?
Oh, one other item is that the planning... City council did consider the housing element and referred it off to a subcommittee of council members. They've requested that two planning commissioners attend the subcommittee meeting to, I guess, you know, discuss the commission's sort of take on the housing element and what you thought was important and whatnot. So the date on that is, I wrote it down here somewhere, it's Monday, October 27th at 7:30 PM. So I need...
I would like to be on that.
Okay. Leave that up to you collectively to decide.
I would like to be on the subject.
27th?
27th is a Monday night.
Uh-huh.
7:30 PM.
So I'm recommending myself.
I'm recommending myself as well.
So you got two already?
Yeah. Okay, good.
7:00 PM?
7:30.
7:30.
Good. And I'll send an appointment to confirm that.
Here, in the small office?
It'll probably be in the large conference room. But I'll send all that out to you, the two individuals. So that'll be Commissioners Cunningham and Parker.
All right, thanks.
Great. Thank you. That's all I had.
All right. Moving on to items initiated by the commission.
Subcommittee updates, I guess, is number one on that. Any updates?
Update, well, we have our green building ordinance, subcommittee meeting next Wednesday to discuss the building officials' recommendation, and then steps towards our recommendations to the city council after that, so that's next Wednesday.
Right.
Seven o'clock? Yeah, seven o'clock.
Did you show that update? Anything else?
I just want to say that if we have a meeting on the... The next meeting, I may not be able to attend, depending on if it's... What day is it going to be?
And...
Yeah, the 23rd. I will be absent.
Okay.
And also, I'd like to find out about the status of 8 Thomas Avenue. Is it any permit been issued for that project, or what's the status of that?
They've applied for a building permit, and it's in plan review.
Oh, they have applied.
They've applied.
Because the reason I'm asking is, for a while, I was thinking that they were planning to sell it. They're not going to build it at all. But that's good to know that.
They've applied.
That's good.
Any other comments? Are we done?
No.
Okay.
Time to make a motion. Should I go ahead and make a motion again?
Yes.
A gentleman with a motion to adjourn to the regular meeting of October 23rd, 2014, at 7:30 PM.
Second.
I'll second that motion.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Good night.